Welcome to the Tuesday, February 21st, 2023 session of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the deputy city clerk please call the roll?
Honorable Mayor Panleong.
Here.
Alderman Morris.
Here.
Alderman Novick.
Here.
Alderman Rommel.
Here.
Alderman Notes.
Here.
Alderman Preschlack.
Here.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Here.
Alderman Bushman is absent. Alderman Weber.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. Good crowd tonight. First item on the agenda is comments by the mayor. And, oh, I should do the Pledge of Allegiance. How did I forget that? Thank you. Thank you, wingman.
I think after four years, I'd remember. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Off to an auspicious start there. Okay, the first thing on the agenda is comments by the mayor. And I just have a couple of items to briefly mention. First, toward the end of last week, in the course of just, I think, a normal review, Elizabeth, the city's AAA bond rating was reaffirmed by Moody's. So we continue to have a fortress balance sheet and significant reserves and a nice surplus that you'll hear about again, or a little bit later. So continue to manage the FISC prudently here. Secondly, I'm not sure if there's anybody here who is interested, but in the course of the litigation over the McKinley property, it came to our attention that anybody who spoke in a public meeting under current Illinois laws had to be named as a defendant. And we asked about this. And so we had a number of people that spoke in public comment on that subject. And they ended up becoming defendants in the suit. And we asked why that was, and we were told that, well, that's the way the statute reads, because they want to make sure that people who made public comment are informed and know that the litigation is happening. And it struck us that that was kind of inappropriate, an inappropriate solution to a problem that really is just a notice issue. And people shouldn't have to hire lawyers because they made public comment. So we have been working with Senator, State Senator Julie Morrison for the last year or so, and had our city attorney go ahead and draft some language that's been, that has now been inserted into some pending legislation in Springfield. And if all goes well, we will have acted to correct that rather, what I think is inappropriate outcome. And, you know, we didn't want public debate to be chilled and that, you know, if you thought you were going to be potentially named as a defendant in a lawsuit for making public comment about a controversial subject, that was not, that's not how we do things in Lake Forest. So fingers crossed, sometime in the next week or two, we should get word that that language has been changed in the state statutes. Two language that is, was prepared by us to make sure that specifically, or by our city attorney to make sure that it was specifically effective in remedying that problem. So thank you, by the way, Kurt, for drafting the language that you can now tell your children and your grandchildren that you have some, some actual words that you wrote in the state statutes of Illinois. The third thing I just wanted to mention, over the weekend, I had the privilege of seeing a production of this, by the Citadel Theater, of a play called The Christians. And one of the many jewels in Lake Forest is that we have a full-on professional theater company. And they play, they play in a small theater, they play over in the theater at the high school, the West Campus. But it's a, they do a masterful job. The Christians was a fascinating show. It was beautifully performed, and the sets were incredible. And it's now been nominated for a Jefferson Award, which, for those of you who are familiar with Chicago Theater, that's the, that's the Tony Award for Chicago for the year. So I would highly recommend trying out the Citadel Theater. If you can see The Christians, I would. I would say, I've been to many shows there. I would say this is, this is my favorite so far. Very thought-provoking and very informative and sort of interesting and very, very well-produced. So just another of Lake Forest's many assets. That concludes my comments. Next item on the agenda is comments by the city manager, Jason.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. Good evening and nice to see so many people here in the audience tonight. We'll give Dr. Jill Barron full credit for drawing people out tonight. But in all seriousness, I'm really happy to introduce Dr. Barron tonight. She is the new president, or still somewhat new, president of Lake Forest College. For those in the audience who are not familiar with our community spotlights, they're really intended to highlight some of the remarkable institutions that exist in our community. The mayor, as you just heard, regularly refers to the many unique jewels and treasures that exist in the community that make Lake Forest so special, and certainly Lake Forest College is an important part of that. In fact, the college predates the city, the city's incorporation. But in any event, the city has always maintained a really strong partnership with the college and look forward to that working relationship continuing under Dr. Barron's leadership. She officially joined the college as the 14th president last year after previous leadership roles at the University of Pennsylvania and the University of the Sciences. And happy to have her here tonight to share her story a little bit with the city council and with the audience, and also to provide a brief update on the state of the college. With that, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you, Jason, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council and guests. Delighted to be here tonight. It's really a wonderful opportunity to interact here again with the Lake Forest community. My first kind of touch point was actually Lake Forest Day in early July, and that was a lot of fun I got to meet. I see a few familiar faces here, and I continue to very much want to build relationships with the city on behalf of the college. I would love to see a show of hands of anyone that is actually an alumnus or an alumny of the college. One hand raised there? That's true. Okay, so let me start out by echoing, I think, a great phrase that I already heard a few snippets up here tonight, and that is that Lake Forest College really, I would love for us to be seen as an intellectual and cultural asset for the city of Lake Forest. And that really speaks to the very longstanding relationship that we have with the city. I know that many of you have only really touched the edge of our campus, perhaps walking your dog by our beautiful, can you hear me?
Oh, there we go. That's better? Okay. So I can't rewind the whole thing, but again, you know, I hope that some of you have actually gone past the borders and the sidewalks of our beautiful campus more than just maybe walking your dogs and peeking in, because we do have so much to offer, and that's what I wanted to touch upon here tonight, just to give you a little bit of a glance and some facts and figures. So I'll just really cover some of the recent rankings of the college. I'll talk a little bit about the strategic framework that we have under construction, our imperative to really engage the Lake Forest community, and then maybe end with sharing of some of our upcoming community events, which of course, we want to welcome you very much to participate in. So I was asked to say a few words about my transition from, from emergency physician to college president. And yes, indeed, I did practice emergency medicine. I am a real physician, and I did practice for 30 years, taking care of patients every single week across all different ages and different illnesses and injuries. And I like to tell people that I went to work every single day having absolutely no idea what I would do. If you all can think about the work you engage in, and you can think about how that might feel to walk into an office setting and not know any of your employees, for example. So I never knew any of the skills of the people that were going to be on my team that day. I never knew the conditions of the hospital, whether the beds would be full. I never knew if a massive traffic collision was going to take place outside our doors or there would be some sort of toxic spill. So I had to become very, very, very comfortable with uncertainty. And I think that being able to apply that to the uncertain world of higher education right now and what it all brings to us really was probably the best training I could have ever had to become a college president. And although it does not seem like a logical step, it really has served me quite well. But why did I make this move? Why did I decide to come to Lake Forest College? It really was a wonderful chemistry that I felt with the Board of Trustees and the Search Committee. I believe very, very strongly in the value proposition of a liberal arts education. I believe it positions students incredibly well for future success, because we don't teach them what to think, we teach them how to think. We teach them about critical analysis and problem solving, how to get along with other people, how to work across boundaries in organizations, how to think, how to communicate effectively. Those are all things that I think really are the best products and outputs of an education. We have a very vibrant student life, and I'll talk to you about some of the different student pipelines that we have. And again, I was very attracted to the strong connection that we have to the Lake Forest community and essentially just the geographic excellence of where we are positioned and the beauty that we have surrounding us. So at a glance, we are running really strong. We have just recruited two record-breaking years of freshmen, and they are going to rise up and continue to populate the college. And we're on track this year for another really, really good enrolled freshman class. We have just shy of 2,000 undergraduate students. Roughly half of our students come from out of state, so we are continuing to really be known as a nationally selective liberal arts college. About one in every six of our students are international, and we see them hail from somewhere around 80 different countries. It is really quite remarkable, the breadth of countries that they represent. One in every three of our students is a domestic student of color, and many of our students have great need financially, and we really pride ourselves on being accessible to many of these students through our scholarship programs. We have a ton of athletes at our college. Again, about one in six of our students is a student athlete, and we think that that's such an important part of their experience in a co-curricular fashion. And there's, it brings a lot of vibrancy and a lot of spirit to our campus. And we also get into championships every now and then, so that's very exciting. So you can see some of our most important rankings here on the slide. We are definitely within the top 100 liberal arts colleges in the country. We've been noted number three for our health services, the quality of our health services. And nowadays, that's so important with some of the needs that students are coming to college with regard to some of their mental health needs and other, other issues. We have been rated number four for best science facilities. Those of you that actually have been on our campus probably have seen the Lillard Science Building, which is an incredible facility. For a liberal arts undergraduate school, we have some of really the best quality labs in the country, and that attracts a lot of students who are interested in, for example, STEM fields or health professions. We are noted to be a college of high value. So we all know that what goes into value is cost and quality, and it's not always that you get something of greater value just because you're paying more for it. So we really pride ourselves on being of great value. And the metric that we love to talk about is our social mobility metric. We have been rated for several years in a row number two in the country. So we know that with that metric, we are providing an exceptional transformative experience for many, many students. So foresters really make it happen. Our brand of liberal arts education is very pragmatic and very applied. So it's not just a fundamental delving into the breadth and depth of disciplines across the curriculum, but really it merges, it merges that kind of a foundation with very practical experience. And we do that through internships, through research, through study abroad opportunities. And we like to use the term "in the forest and in the loop," because we have built programs locally, all throughout Lake County and the surrounding suburban neighborhoods. And we also have a Center for Chicago Programming, where we make opportunities available student, to students in the city. So we really consider ourselves to have the best of both worlds, in the forest and in the loop. We are embarking on a new strategic framework. Every new president gets to do that, and we're in the middle of a very exciting process. And we've really taken a lot of input from the community, meaning our greater community of our faculty, staff, and students. And we are putting them together with some unifying themes, and we hope by June, we will have a really nice framework to share publicly on our website. If you look on our website right now, you can see different pieces of the framework under construction, and you will see that community is a very, very large theme in our framework. So the first theme is really building an inclusive, thriving community. Our second is stewarding and promoting the unique Lake Forest College brand. And we do have very, very many areas of unique distinction that provide that really transformative student experience. And then our third theme is investing in and securing our future as a leading residential liberal arts college, because again, we want to remain that true intellectual and cultural asset for the city. So how can you get involved and be engaged with Lake Forest College? I assume many of you in the room know about these things already, but just to go over, there are things happening on a regular basis. I would say nearly every day, there is some event of interest, and many of these are truly open to the public. So we're trying to find better ways to connect with you and to get that information out. But we have lectures and academic events nearly all the time in the evening. We have an art gallery that has beautiful work of not only our own faculty and students, but also visiting artists. We have periodically put on music concerts, many of them are at the Gordon Community Center, theater performances, lots of fan club and sporting events. Some of you might be members at our sports and rec center, so we engage with the community like that. People have come in and used our event space for different events, like weddings, for example. We do have some opportunities for adult and community education, and we'd love to hear from you about things that we might be able to do better in that capacity as part of our community engagement initiative. The summertime, our campus opens up to a lot of local schools for different sports camps, for example, and people often use our pool and our, and our playing fields. And we have all other kinds of programs that you see listed here on the slide. Another way that is such an important way for us to engage with you is for you all as leaders in the community, in your different businesses and employer, employee capacities, is to provide career and internship support to our students. So we have just a ready-made, available group of students who would love to come and work with you. I know some have actually worked here in, in city council and have done various projects for the city of Lake Forest, and I hope you've been pleased with the quality, the students that you've been able to work with. So please keep the ideas flowing. Let us know how we can work with you, how you can work with us. And again, I invite you to really engage with us and want to thank you again for the opportunity to come and speak with you here tonight. And do I have any time for questions?
Questions?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Hi, I live in the neighborhood, and I love seeing how the dorms are being built. It's just, it's so vibrant. It's great seeing the kids. It's just wonderful. And I wonder how many kids live off-campus now?
We have a predominantly residential-based population. We have very, very few students who live off-campus. Now, we do have a commuter population, which is actually quite a unique student population for a liberal arts college, but we take a lot of pride in that. We have a wonderful program of seamless transfer from students who attend College of Lake County and some of the other community colleges, and these are really the cream of the crop students who come. Not everyone can immediately afford a four-year college. So we have a wonderful transfer pipeline and really get the best transfer students. Many of them choose to continue to be commuter students, some do not, but the vast majority of our population actually live on campus. Yeah.
Other comments? Alderman Rommel?
I just have a, I have a question first. Back in my day, I was able to access your library as a high school student. And I don't know, with COVID and with security concerns, are, is that still available? I just would find myself sometimes in the evening accessing your library to study and also your wealth of books.
Sure.
That I would use to do research. Is that still available to high school students at all?
You know, we have, I would say, really prided ourselves on not creating a lot of locks and boundaries, but as you might imagine, in this day and age, that has become an increasing concern for, you know, all of our campus constituents. So we do look for IDs to get into the library, but I think it's something that we could think about and talk about for the future. But, you know, we try very hard to make our students feel safe about who's coming on campus and accessing the areas.
It was just a great resource. You know, if you were in after-school activities, the high school library closed. This one wasn't, you know, sometimes you're in the wee hours of the, anyway, it was just a nice asset. And I just want to thank you and, and, you know, accent the fact that it's a fabulous, fabulous asset to have right in our community. And I too am a real believer in liberal arts education, so, you know.
Thank you very much for those comments. And I'll just leave you with a quick list of upcoming community events. We've got Forester Day coming up in a week, which is one of our largest events for our annual giving program. We've got an art exhibit, opening reception coming up soon on the same day, actually a band and orchestra concert that same week. So you can see as we move toward commencement, on May 13th, we've got some other things going on, an Innovation Weekend, a Public Policy Analysis Challenge Finals is something that is going to be very exciting. I think that that is actually the wrong date. It's not March 2nd. I think it's later in, I think it's May 2nd. And then also look out for an exhibit that's going to occur at the Lake Forest Lake Bluff History Center on African-American history. So I think that would be a really wonderful exhibit to, to check out. So please, you know, contact us and think of ways that, you know, we can interact. And once again, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Barron, and I'll reiterate what Alderman Rommel said. It's a massive asset to have a college of this caliber, any college, but particularly a college of this caliber, right in the middle of our community, right at ground zero, actually, where Lake Forest was founded. So it sounds like, it sounds like you've got a lot going on, and it's great.
Great. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Next up is the opportunity for citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address the council on something that's not on our agenda tonight? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see those hands. I looked in the wrong direction.
I've come to this before, so I thought that my name would be called from the sheet in the back.
I didn't get the sheet. I apologize for that, but.
No problem. Thank you again for allowing me to speak and.
If you could put the microphone right in front of your mouth.
Sure.
That would be, it'll, it'll project a lot better.
There you go.
My name is David Tanaka. I'm the president and a resident of the Pine Oaks Condominium Association, and my purpose in being here today is to clear the record of some alleged facts and some erroneous assumptions about Metro's plan to install crossover switches just north of the Telegraph Road train station and adjacent to residents' nearby backyards. As we know, a crossover switch is designed to move trains and rail cars from one track to another, and Metro plans to install for them. The city has taken the position without any oversight whatsoever that Metro and its assurances to adhere to approved safety standards are sufficient, and that the recent disastrous derailment in East Palestine, Ohio is, quote, "completely unrelated to our situation." But given the facts, neither assumption is warranted. Early this year, private citizens observed unusual work near the tracks, 100-yard trenches, backhoes, earth movers, newly constructed buildings, and questioned Metro about it. Metro repeatedly assured the citizens that it was replacing old signals. But as work continued and under pressure from those same citizens, Metro finally was forced to abandon the old signal story and admit it was planning to install the four crossover switches, supposedly to facilitate reverse commuting. ABC News reported just last night that the Transportation Secretary had criticized rail companies for long attempting to avoid the strict guidelines and industry standards that the city is relying on. So what's behind Metro's plan? It's the third rail. Relying on a two-year-old agreement, Metro is aiming its sights now at Lake Forest and its citizens, citing a need to, quote, "improve," close quote, commuter services by installing those same switches that would facilitate having a third rail. Metro has supplied no data to support a growing demand in passenger rail or perceived improvements, quite the opposite. Contrary to Metro's claims, the Tribune reported on February 16th that only 40% of the passengers Metro lost in the pandemic had returned, with the headline, "Rest in Peace, Metro's Commuter Rail." Metro's own financials from 2020 and 2021 show that passenger revenue declined by $300 million in those two years alone, and many believe it will continue. Those are the facts. With commuter traffic waning and revenue suffering, Metro has seized the opportunity to shift its own pandemic shortfalls to the city and its residents. If allowed to continue, the inevitable result will be the fire department and emergency delays, traffic congestion, pollution, noise, faltering real estate market, and yes, even a possible train wreck. News of train accidents caused by switching errors is widely reported. More facts. The city says it, quote, "strongly opposes a third rail or any plan that would increase freight traffic." My question is, what has the city done to fulfill its commitment? Has it closely reviewed the two-year agreement with Metro? Has it retained counsel skilled in handling cases of this type? Has it buttonholed Metro on the way it handled the communications? Has it retained advisors on train switching and construction matters? What about setting aside funding for sound vibration and site immigration mitigation? Excuse me. The city previously paid about $200,000 for lobbying and advice in another matter involving Metro. So this does become a matter of transparency. Are we getting good advice, or are we simply relying on what Metro says is good enough? Thank you for the opportunity to appear. I can answer any questions that there are.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other members of the public that would like to speak on a matter that's not on our We have no committee reports this evening, so the next item on our agenda is items for omnibus vote consideration. We have six tonight. Number one is approval of the February 6th, 2023 city council meeting minutes. Number two is approval of an Illinois Department of Transportation resolution appropriating $1.5 million in motor fuel tax funds to be used for the 2023 annual pavement resurfacing program. Number three is approval of a Public Works Committee recommendation for an award of bid to Ephraim Carlson and Son for the Police Department Break Room renovation project in the amount of $88,825, to include a project contingency in the amount of $11,175 for a grand total amount of $100,000. Fourth is approval to award a contract to Xenon Environmental Corporation to purchase 432 replacement membrane modules included in the fiscal year 2024 budget in the amount of $266,500 and $15,500 for onsite technical support, for a total of $282,000. Fifth is consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Historic Preservation Commission, first reading and if desired by the city council, final approval. And sixth is consideration of a recommendation from the Plan Commission in support of a special use permit to allow a berm exceeding seven feet in height on a residential property at 934 Longwood Drive, adjacent to the railroad tracks. If desired by the council, waive first reading and grant final approval of this ordinance. Any items here that any member of the council would like taken separately, or are any questions? Okay? In that case, I would entertain a motion to approve the omnibus. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Novick.
Aye.
Alderman Rommel.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Oops. I'm so sorry. Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Seven yays, zero nays, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is old business, and I'm going to, this is, we've got one item of old business. It's going to be presented by Chuck Myers, Superintendent of Parks and Forestry. It's the review of contracts, bids, and financing options for Deer Path Park Athletic Field Improvement Project, consideration to approve contracts and bids for the Deer Path Park Athletic Field Improvement Contract, Project if desired, and city council may consider a resolution expressing intent to issue bonds for the project. So Chuck?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to talk about this important project. I'm going to start just reminding you of the I'm going to start just reminding you of the timeline. We're not going to go through this, but just to remind you that this really formally started back in 2019 after it was identified, the synthetic turf, that is, it was identified in the Park and Recreation Department master plan. The diagram also highlights the robust community engagement process that was undertaken in November of '21 through March of '22. And then the city park, the city's Park and Rec Board formally recommended moving forward with synthetic turf fields at the Deer Path Community Park in March of '22. Since that time, we have come here to talk about this a total of six times, six different meetings. So, and then here we are tonight for your consideration of approval. So there was a huge team effort that got us here. It involved over 15 city staff members. I would say that every department was touched in some way and had input. So this was kind of the core people that have been involved along the way, and they're from multiple departments. So in addition, you can see on the right, the city brought in a large consulting group led by Hitchcock Design Group and a number of firms under them, including Hayne Associates, Primera, Robert Juris, the architecture firm. And then we also have recently brought on Nicholas and Associates. We'll talk more about that. And then Johnson Consulting, as we talked about last time. And I also wanted to extend a huge thank you for all of the tremendous effort by city staff and the consulting team. So thank you for all involved on this project. And I also would be remiss if I didn't mention and also thank the city council or the city managers advisory group, who added a great deal of insight to the project and also provided some key recommendations as we went forward. So with that, I'm going to ask Jim Lockfair, the Assistant to the Director of Public Works, to talk a little bit about the construction management.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Prior to Superintendent Myers continuing on the presentation and really starting to dive into the costs associated with the project, we wanted just to take a quick step back to talk through construction management bidding and oversight services because it is different than what you typically see with one of our regular CIP public works projects, where those typically follow a bid process with one bid package. We then make a recommendation and city council approves the selected general contractor, one general contractor. And then from there, city staff, specifically the engineering section, will oversee that project work. So construction management bidding and oversight services does differ from that process, and I'll explain it in a little bit more detail. But it is fairly common in the world of municipal work when dealing with larger projects. And really with those larger projects, there are great benefits in terms of total cost and coordination. And so in identifying construction management services, one helpful way to think through it that we have thought through is comparing it to, again, other public works CIP projects. And one that I'll bring up is the Baroque Storm Sewer Improvement, where that recent project truly followed that traditional bid approach, one bid package. There was one general contractor selected for that work. And predominantly, that project was storm sewer improvements. That's what it was focused on. That was the main trade. And that general contractor also did bring in some of their own subcontractors for some concrete asphalt work as well as landscaping, but that general contractor truly did most of that project work. In this case, with the Deer Path Park project, truly all contractual trades are represented. We have major work across all utilities, where there's storm sewer, water main, sanitary, as well as electrical distribution. There's a field installation on the western end of the site, and all these things Superintendent Myers will review here in more detail. Western end of the site, there's native plant areas, a substantial native plant area that will be undertaken, again, many different trades representative truly all across the board. And so with that, in identifying construction management services fitting this project, city staff underwent a RFP process, a competitive process, to select first a firm for bidding services with the intent that in selecting a firm for bidding services, we would be one day back here with city council recommending the firm to oversee the actual project as well. And that RFP process was detailed out in quite a rate detail in the write-up. Just one of the things, a few things I wanted to highlight with that was truly it being competitive. We looked at firm past project experience, project successes, references, as well as their fees associated with the project. All those things were reviewed and had to be submitted in detail. And one thing that really stood out to the city staff RFP team in reviewing the submittal, specifically with moving forward with Nicholas and Associates as the identified firm, they've done over 50 turf field projects, 35 of those regionally. Truly felt that they're really some industry leaders in constructing turf field projects. And so selecting Nicholas to fulfill those bidding services, those occurred after the consultant team finished the design. And again, speaking to the differences between our standard CIP process and construction management services, where again, going back to Baroque, one bid package, for this project, there were 11 bid packages, where truly each of those bid packages were competitively bid, multiple contractors submitted bids. And the great, one of the great things behind that is there's confidence in we truly have firms that sharpen their pencils in each of those trade areas where we know we obtain competitive pricing. And so in moving forward now, if the project is approved, Nicholas and Associates would oversee the entire construction process. Again, it's actually nine contractors in total, lot of site management. They would bring full-time staff to include project superintendents as well as project managers to take care of the day-to-day. City staff will be, still be involved in that process, which certainly aren't going away, but their expertise is ultimately what will make that construction process even more successful. And Chuck will highlight in more detail some of those fees here in the next slide.
All right. Thanks, Jim. So back on September 6th, we came to you, and we talked about this idea of the base project. And with that, we talked about the yellow box, as you can see it on here, to illustrate what was included in the project. At that, at the time, we were at 70% design, and we had an estimate of $12.5 million for the base project at that time. So just to remind you, the base project does not include things like the building structures that we're going to talk more about in a few minutes, the things like the playground, the boardwalk, and the walking path. So for a moment, we're going to focus on the base project and what it does include. So that area in the yellow includes all of the site excavation, all the grading, all the stormwater mitigation work that would need to be done, detention pond, the natural areas enhancements, the synthetic turf products themselves, the site lighting, walking path loop, and then some of the smaller sportfield amenities. So those are all included in the table when you see the construction costs. And then, as Jim mentioned, he explained the benefits and the process moving forward with the construction management. But just to illustrate that a little bit further, you can see the second line in there that says construction management fees and the general conditions and insurance. There is a percentage-based rate to oversee all of the construction on the site. It also includes things like general liability insurance, performance bonding, and then general conditions. General conditions can be divided into two different areas. The fixed general conditions are those site superintendents and the site project managers. So that would be Nicholas staff onsite managing this. The general conditions relate to things that are needed for the construction site, so things like a construction trailer, fencing, temporary power. There's a very long list of things that are included in that list. As a side note, too, those items are not under the fee. They are basically a pass-through. They're necessary for the project. However, they're not, Nicholas doesn't add a fee for those costs. So those are the general conditions. So then finally, you see the A and E, the architectural and engineering construction phase services. So these would include services from the Hitchcock Design Team and the other people that have been involved with design. So Hay and all the rest of the team, Primera, would be part of that. This service is to ensure that the project specifications are met and that it is, the project is constructed according to the design plan. So this is the designer's part in ensuring that it is all done to specifications. They'll also have some work with us on assisting with the administration of the project. So the total for the base project that we're presenting is $12,891,483. So as I mentioned, we came to you at the 70% design with 12.5. It did go up some. Some of, one of the things we wanted to illustrate to you, though, is that some of those costs are in part due to things that go into the base. And we heard loud and clear from city council, the mayor, that back in, even back in May, that we were going to do this right. We were going to look at sustainable practices. We're going to look at being sensitive to environmental issues. That was a thought that came through loud and clear from the community engagement interactions that we had, but also it was furthered by the advisory group and their desire to make sure that these ideas were incorporated in. So we took that seriously, and we looked specifically for products like the turf system. We spent a night talking to you January 17th about those turf project, the products, so I won't go back into those again. But those did come as a premium because they did offer recyclability, they offered durability, they met a lot of what we're looking for in the environmental sensitivity. And the Brockville, as you recall, is a natural product. So that's why we're showing this was, was one of the reasons why the cost went up a little bit. So $750,000 premium for that. The natural areas enhancement relate to the west side of the park, those natural areas. So the natural areas include native seeding and wetland plugs to ensure that the area is planted with native plants. That will be successful. It was our feeling that we would, we wanted to make sure with the plugs, if you know, the plugs are actual plant material rather than just seed, it does ensure a better product, and it's easier for us to manage. So I won't go into that anymore, but it is definitely a cost upgrade to do that. So the total cost we're showing is $890,000. That is included. These are not additional costs. These are included now in the base. So with that, I wanted to transition into the menu of additional amenities. So these items were all bid as alternates in the process. That enables city council to look at and decide on these items independently. So the base bid had all of the things in it that had to be part of the project. These are things that we could choose from. I would also note that these costs include their own contingencies independent of the other ones. So we isolated these, in other words. They also include the fees for Nicholas if you decide to move forward with them. So each of the, the next few slides, I'm going to go through these separately. So I'm going to start with the A on the map up in the top. This is the north building. This, this is, this is the restroom concession and open-air pavilion. It also has space for utilities such as IT infrastructure, HVAC, and electrical. There is a one, there's one family bathroom, which is up in this area, and there are 10 stalls on the other side, restrooms. So fairly large restroom facility. There are also additional spaces for janitorial and things like that. And then there is a dedicated concession area with a storage area. The materials for this and the other building that I'm going to talk about did include a 50-year shingle, asphalt shingle, that is, hardy board siding, and a brick base. You can see the illustration here. You get the idea of what it's going to look like. There, you don't see it on here, but there is a large open-air pavilion area. So it's, it's this area on the schematic is all open, where we can have picnic tables and where people can relax. So the total cost for this amenity is $1.417 million, and that does, again, include the construction management fees and contingency. So the next building is designated on the map B. We haven't gotten real creative with naming these buildings, but we have the north and the south, of course. So the south building, also restroom and pavilion. It is a much smaller building. There are two family restrooms in this facility, and you can see them on the bottom here. And then there are a couple of storage areas. This is for electric, and this is just a general storage area with a sink. Again, the materials are very similar, or they are the same as the previous building. And you can see in the schematic, again, this is the building portion and then the pavilion, open-air pavilion up at the top. So that would be on the north side of the building. I am going to come back to this very quickly to talk about the maintenance shop, but the total cost on this amenity is $682,157. So the maintenance shop, this was bid as a separate building up where you see the sea up in the northwest corner of the site. If, we did have it on a separate track, as you recall, we came to you in September. We asked for additional funding for design of this. That was for a freestanding building with a large storage area, a slab that we could put equipment on. Due to some of this aesthetic concerns, and I would say this building was different than the rest, it was a metal building. It didn't look like the rest. We were planning on screening it with a lot of landscape material, but we did have some concerns about the aesthetic, but also the cost came in high. So when we bid this, it came in over $1 million. So we felt that we needed to look at a new approach. We didn't, also at the same time, we did not want to slow the main project down. With that, we would be proposing a redesign, kind of a value engineering process. And the idea that came out was what you're seeing in the schematic is the addition of a proposed garage, a maintenance garage, on the south end of the south building. It's already on concrete, so there is a concrete walkway that gets wider on the south end. So we would need to move this building slightly north, and it would accommodate a 25 to 30 feet addition to the south end. Obviously, there are some huge cost savings because we're not running separate utilities like we would have in the northwest corner. We're also, you have the efficiencies with fire suppression, all of the different systems, HVAC... We're also, you have the, the efficiencies with fire suppression, all of the different systems, HVAC, all of that, we would save a lot of money on. We also thought it was helpful that it would just be an addition. It would be using the same materials. We'd be using the hardy board and the shingles. So it would look very natural out there. In addition, it would provide a, a, a great functionality. Being in the, the center of the park, our maintenance activities would be centered there. And we'd have all the storage and for materials and things like that. We did talk to the consultants about this and we believe that we can design and build this for 425,000. So we are suggesting an allowance for this. Obviously, we're quickly switching gears to, to do the design work if approved tonight. The other thing that's nice about this is we can utilize the same bidding that was already done. So the contractor that's doing the other bidding, we would be able to talk to them about adding this in. So we believe that the, the design work could be done in just a few weeks. And then we would be able to add this to the project in a very cost-effective way. So one last thing to mention, we, we're showing the building down here, the addition of the building. You see the other C up there? That's because we would still, within that 425,000, we believe we can add that, that area for storage. So it's basically a concrete structure, flat surface that would allow us to have things like goals, home run fences. It would be a storage area and we would add screening to that area. So people wouldn't see that as either. So the total cost, as I mentioned, is an allowance of 426,000. So the next amenity to talk about is the playground. As you can see, the D in the north end of the site is directly adjacent to the north building, just to the east. So people can sit in the pavilion, they can see their kids or they can see the sports field. It's a playground that's designed as like a tot level, so two to five-year-olds. It does have a five-year or a five-foot fence around it for safety. So kids can't run out into the street or anything like that. And it does have a sports theme, as you can see. We thought this would be kind of a neat addition to the park. In addition, there are three separate, the, the Ds along the east side here are these small fitness stations. Each one of these, these two have two different functions. And then the final one is a larger structure that has ability for, for people to work out. So these are with poured in place. So there, there's surfacing, the rubber type surfacing that we have in our other parks for the playgrounds. So the total cost for all of this combined is 242,533. And then the, the final amenity of this type is the boardwalk. Shown as letter E on the map. This is the area that we talked about with the native plantings and all the natural areas that we think are going to be a, a nice asset to the park. So this would be, the area would, or this, this would include the boardwalk and the crushed stone path. So it's the path that comes off of the main walkway and it would loop through those natural areas. The platform is in the cor, the, the southwest corner, kind of where the E is there. It's a round wooden structure that would also have some benches on it and for relaxing or for wildlife viewing. The walkway, all of this in the natural areas, we do think it'll provide a quiet getaway area for people who may want to take a break from the action or for a resident who may just want to enjoy wildlife viewing or relaxing in nature. So the total cost of this amenity is 236,260. So the final thing I, I would say, this wasn't mentioned earlier, but this is an add-on that we, we bid as an alternate. And really, this is adding sod along the perimeter of the, of the site, along the walkway, all of that. There is some sod, actual natural sod that goes around the field between the path and the artificial turf. So this would be to sod those areas. And then the second part of this would be a two-year maintenance contract for the native areas that I just talked about. So it would allow us to ensure the success of that planting through making sure that weeds are controlled, things like that. So the total cost of this is 100,358. So these represent all the amenities for your discussion. But before we do that, I'd like to ask Director Holub to come up and provide an overview of the project financing. Yeah, yeah, that was going to come up later. But one thing to note, we talked about this at previous meetings, but the total cost for the project that, that you're seeing before you and in, in the request for the contracts, it does include the tennis courts and pickleball. And as you recall, we decided that we would make that part of the project. Obviously, there's some efficiencies there with construction management team would be building all of this. The key though is it's not part of the financing here. It is financed through the Park and Public Land Fund. So we need to approve it because it's part of the contract. However, it is a totally separate funding source.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. The next few slides will just cover proposed financing for the project. First of all, you can see the three components here on this slide. For the last few years at the March Budget Workshop meeting, we've given you a summary of how the general fund is tracking for the year, how revenues are doing compared to budget, what we're anticipating from expenses. And the last few years, we've projected an operating surplus in the general fund, which is the primary operating fund of the city. I'm going to give you a preview of what you're going to hear in March is that we're currently projecting about a $4 million operating surplus in the general fund for fiscal year '23. So in the last few years, the city council has approved those operating surplus dollars be transferred out of the general fund to other specific purposes. And so we're recommending this year that that operating surplus be applied directly to this project and reduce the financing needed. So that's the first $4 million. As Superintendent Myers just summarized, related to the tennis and pickleball courts, that portion, which is 435,827, would be funded from reserves in the Parks and Public Land Fund. That's a fund dedicated to park-related improvements. And so is a logical place for that improvement to be funded. And so the remaining amount, based on the amounts you've seen in the presentation today, would be somewhere between 8.89 and 12 million dollars. That would be recommended for bond issuance under a general obligation bond issue. What we did over the last week is work with our financial advisory firm and our bond council to talk a little bit about what a bond issue might look like in today's bond market. So what we did do is we looked at two bond financing options. You can see we applied the $4 million operating surplus in both netting to a 12 million or a $10 million bond issue. Of course, if the, if it was less, it would be less. But just for illustrative purposes, we picked these two options. And then what we've provided below is what is currently projected based on bond market conditions today. We looked at 10-year financing and 15-year financing. The city has traditionally tried to pay off its debt on a very accelerated schedule. So we try to shorten that debt as much as possible. That's beneficial from a rating standpoint, but it's also beneficial in reducing interest costs. So the faster we pay off the debt, the less interest costs we're going to incur. So under both models, we looked at 10 and 15 years. The projected interest rate under a 10-year financing is 3.06%. And 15 years, 3.48. So you're playing, paying a little bit of premium in your, in your interest rate for a longer-term option. Of course, those interest rates are changing, you know, from week to week. But this gives you an idea of where the bond market is today. To the right of those, the larger numbers are the annual debt service under each of those options. So a $12 million bond issue financed over 10 years at 3.06% interest would be an annual debt service of 1,282,000. And then you can see that comparatively, the 10 million issue over 10 years is just a little over a million. The 15-year options, of course, go down 966,000 per year under the 12 million option and about 806,000 in a $10 million issue. Right below those debt service amounts, I'm giving you the percentage impact as a percent of the 2022 property tax levy that you approved in December. So what would it have, what would that annual debt service have increased the levy from last year? So most conservative, the 12 million 10 years would be about 3.5%. Going down to the 10 million 15-year option is about 2.22%. Again, as a percent of the total city's levy for 2022. And then the dollar amounts underneath those, we are always looking at the average household. When we talk about the property tax levy, we use an $800,000 home. That's the current median house value in the city of Lake Forest. And so you can see under those percentages, the annual impact to an $800,000 home of that annual debt service. A few items to note on this modeling is that in the 2022 levy that you approved in December, we included a $350,000 addition. And that was intended to, if this project proceeded, begin to phase in the debt service so that it was not all incurred in a single year. But also recognizing that there were other capital improvements that the $350,000 could be applied to if the project didn't proceed. So you did approve that. So 350,000 towards this annual debt service has already been levied. And so you've already begun to phase that in. What I wanted to show here was the total impact on the levy once the full debt service is folded in. We would have the option to phase in even over two more years, that debt service. So that would be some options we'd work with for, with Spear, our financial advisory firm, and Chapman and Cutler, our bond council. But there are options on that. So I just want to point out that 350,000 of the debt service is already included in the levy you approved in December. And then also, just for comparison purposes, I did want to just illustrate the difference between 10-year and 15-year, although your annual debt service will go down. The difference in interest costs on the 12-year, on the $12 million issue is 1.3 million. So if you finance over 15 instead of 10 years, it will be 1.3 million more in interest over the 15 years. The $10 million issue, the difference in interest is about 1.1 million. So now we get to a really busy slide, but it's important to the discussion. So as a home rule unit of government, the city is not limited on property taxes and can issue debt without a referendum. However, when the city first went to referendum for home rule status in 2004, there was a tax limiting ordinance that was approved by the city council. That ordinance was then amended in 2008 and amended again in 2013. So the limiting ordinance that we operate under currently limits the total property tax levies for levy debt plus capital improvements to a specific debt service cap. And that cap goes back to 2004's debt levy amount of just over 2.5 million dollars, but it's adjusted annually by the municipal price index. The municipal price index is similar to the CPI, but it looks at public works contracts. And so we felt that that was the appropriate benchmark to use in this type of limiting benchmark because public works contracts are the majority of what we're doing here under the debt service levy and the capital improvements levy. So what you see on this chart is that debt service cap by year, going back many years ago. But just to show you kind of the trend line, the blue amounts here are those actual changes in the municipal price index. We have it updated through 2021. The 2022 municipal price index will not be released until May. And so what I've shown beyond that point is yellow, which is just an estimated or projected change in that cap. The 22 adjustment is estimated at 5%. And then every year after, we've used 3% because that's been a typical average historically. So the yellow is estimated, the blue is actual. So then you get to the components that are applied against that debt service cap. The red amounts here are existing outstanding bonds that the city is paying off that is actually levied on the property tax levy. So not included here is debt that's paid, for example, by the water fund. So we have general obligation bonds that are abated each year because it's paid by water fund revenue rather than the property tax levy. So that debt service is excluded from this calculation. So this is levy debt and you can see what the bond obligations are going through. And again, we focus on that pretty accelerated retirement of debt, short payoffs. And so we don't have a lot of debt going out beyond 2032 currently. The green amount here is the estimated debt service for the most conservative option on the previous slide. So the $12 million issue over 10 years is about 1.3 million in annual debt service for 10 years. And so that is represented here by green. Any of those other financing options would reduce the amount, but we wanted to put the most conservative number here for your, for your review. The next component that applies against this cap is the property tax levy for the capital improvements fund. This was an, an effort by the city a few years ago to begin to add to the pay-as-you-go financing and rely less on debt financing for our five-year capital improvement program. So we introduced a few years ago a capital improvements levy. You can see that we've increased that in recent years. And so these amounts that are levied go directly into the capital improvement fund and they fund projects immediately each year. And so it increases the pay-as-you-go, reduces the debt service requirements. But this is very fluid. So these are estimated amounts in the future, but are determined each year when you consider your annual property tax levy. So they're adjustable, if you will. So what you see is that when we take the 1.28 million debt service, 12 million 10 years, and we add the capital improvement levy currently in the five-year plan, in the first few years, we eclipse that estimated cap. What's important to note here is that this would just simply reduce the capital improvement levy in those years to adjust and stay within the cap. The other option that we've talked about at the staff level with bond council and Spear is a small amount of the principal in year one could be moved to year 10 where there's significant capacity available. It would increase interest costs a small amount, but this is, this would not be a significant amount of principal that was deferred until the 10th year to stay within the limit, once we know what that limit is in May. So the potential bond issue timeline. So I asked Spear and Chapman and Cutler with the question of how fast could we do the bond issue, given changing market conditions and, and a desire to, to avoid any potential rate increases into the future. And they have agreed that this schedule is doable. And we would present to you this evening and include it on your agenda as a bond intent resolution, which I'll explain more in just a minute. That would allow us to proceed with work. We would begin to draft the official statement. Spear Financial would begin marketing with underwriters. We would begin material for Moody's Investor Service to review the rating on the proposed bond issue. And then we would bring to city council on April 3rd, the first reading of the bond ordinance. ordinance. And then at your meeting on April 17th, we would have held the bond auction earlier that morning. We would present to you the bids received and recommend final reading of the bond ordinance based on the bids received. At any point between then and April 17th, the city could delay the sale or change the amount of the financing. So there remains a lot of, a lot of capacity to make changes between now and April 17th. But that would allow us to close April 27th. We'd be able to close before the end of the fiscal year and have that all rolled into the financial statements. So the bond intent resolution presented to you this evening is drafted by Chapman &amp; Cutler Bond Counsel. It is a non-binding resolution, but what it does is set forth the city's intent to issue bonds for this project. It doesn't commit to a specific dollar amount, but you'll see there is a blank in the resolution for a maximum amount, which we would recommend as part of the motion. And that would simply allow us, if we incurred any expenses related to the project between now and bond closing of April 27th, we would be able to take the bond proceeds and reimburse the city. So we would be able to use fund reserves, pay down payments, or pay any amounts that we needed to pay towards the project prior to the closing of the bonds and still be able to reimburse ourselves with the bond proceeds. So with that, I will return it back to Superintendent Myers.
All right. So the information before you was presented in the packet. It does summarize the base costs and the amenities. And as noted earlier, you can see the note on the bottom about the pickleball and tennis courts separately funded. So the total amount for everything is $15,996,043. And you will notice on, on the approvals of the contracts, it's more because of the tennis and pickleball courts. So one, one final note, too. We have gone through the entire permitting process, and I'm happy to say that just today we received the notice from SMC, the Stormwater Management Commission, that they have approved the permit for the project. So much due to the credit of our team with Hitchcock, particularly with Hay and Associates, with Dave Kraft and his expertise, got us through that process, and we have the permit in hand. With that, I would turn it back to City Manager Wisha.
Thank you, Superintendent Myers and Finance Director Hallow. And again, I just want to acknowledge all of the city's staff who've been involved in this project over the course of, well, quite frankly, a year and a half now. There are too many names on the slides to, to list everybody, but I can't overstate the undertaking that it was and what a collaborative team effort it was. Really pleased with the way it's come together. And really with that, I know we've spent a lot of time talking, and I appreciate everybody's patience as we work through that. I'd be happy to turn it over to the mayor and council and be happy to entertain any questions that you may have for staff.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for that comprehensive presentation, very clear and easy to follow, and it's a complicated project, so thank you for that. Alderman Preschle.
Yeah, thank you very much. Outstanding presentation. And I have, I have seven questions, so bear with me. Kind of lucky seven. So first one, if we go with the base and all the amenities, I just wanted to confirm how many different contracts that we're going to enter into? And then the second part of that question, which is my second one, not 1A or B, is like, what type of contracts are we talking about? Are they fixed fee, the time materials, you know, time materials not to exceed? But just kind of get a sense on the contracting in a little bit more detail.
Yeah. I'm glad you're not going to give me all seven because I won't remember them all.
Yeah, yeah, no, I was just going to start with the first.
So the, the contracts that you see before you, the seven contracts, though, if we went with the entire project, those would be the contracts. So the first one is with Nicholas and Associates. So that would include all of those items that were bid as the base of the project we talked about. That one would also include their fees and everything else. So that would be the largest portion. That would be a contract with them directly. Then the next one would be for Hitchcock. Again, that's for that A&amp;E, for that construction phase services. And then the next group of them are contracts that the city would have with the company. So for example, Midwest Sports Turf, that's the company that we're buying the turf products from. We would have a contract with them. But the key on this is that it is going through co-ops, and you, you're all familiar with that. We talk about that with a lot of our different projects, from playgrounds to equipment. That is a, I outlined it in the write-up, so I won't go into that. But those co-ops, as I'll refer to them, the, the project, all of these pieces are through co-op pricing. There's a couple different co-ops, but we would actually have a contract with the company, Midwest, Keeper Goals, and so forth. However, it is going to give us those co-op prices. And just so you know, Midwest Sports Turf, I already mentioned, is the turf project, products. Keeper Goals is for tempor, or portable home run fences. Musco is for the lighting, the, the tall lighting for the field. Polygon is actually for the dugouts, for the baseball diamonds. And then Landscape Structures is for the playground equipment and for the fitness stations. That's a company we work with on our playgrounds quite frequently. So each one of them would be a separate contract.
Yeah. So is Nicholas going to be kind of overall responsible for on-time and on-budget and the project management of this?
They are. That is correct. They are, they are the professionals that we're trusting to keep this on track. And all discuss, we will be tracking with them payouts, all that kind of stuff. But when I mentioned general conditions last time, we will be working with them and tracking those. Any change orders, of course, will be through the city. They'll work with the city on that. They don't have the ability to make those decisions. That's something we would work with them. We do anticipate weekly meetings onsite with, with their team, so, but they would be running the site and, and all of the, everything that's involved with that.
So from a cost control perspective, you're pretty confident that this is a conservative estimate at kind of what we could expect in terms of realized cost over this timeframe, assuming there's no change orders and scope change? Is that a fair statement?
Yeah. They're, the companies, there are a lot, there were 11 different bid packages. There's 10, one contractor got two of those. That's the major piece of this. That is a company that Nicholas is familiar with. They were, they have worked with them and have had great success with them. So we do feel like the project, it was bid. The bidding was, it was complicated, to say the least, because of all these alternates. But we do feel good about the numbers. And in addition, we mentioned the contingencies. Overall, for the whole project, I mentioned that they're built into the amenities. Altogether, it's about $530,000 in contingency. So that is built into the numbers you're seeing.
Okay. And I think I have a couple more for Elizabeth. Elizabeth, can you please tell us what the source of the operating surplus is for last year that we're rolling in, the 4 million? Is it upside surprise on revenue, or is it, you know, kind of lower costs? And just, you know, kind of give us a sense on that. And then also, just maybe comment on our financing strategy and how it impacts our AAA bond rating and, you know, any, any emergencies that come up if we need to address a beach or anything else that
Certainly.
could hit that we can't forecast.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
So the $4 million surplus for FY '23 came primarily from three revenues significantly exceeding budget projections. One is building permits. One is interest income. Interest income, these, every increase in the Fed fund rate over the course of the year has increased the amount we're earning on our bank deposits. And so that alone is probably over $1 million over budget. And then the third is income tax distributions from the state. So we've continued to see those running ahead of projections, even ahead of Illinois Municipal League estimates. And so those three combined are almost all of it. We're seeing a small amount of expenses under budget, but it's much more on the revenue side than on the expense side for fiscal year '23. As far as the city's approach, the, the city, over a number of years, has made a very concerted effort to increase reserves in the general fund. So in 2008, 2009, 2010, with the economic decline, city had to do an early retirement incentive, reduce staff significantly, and had to go through a lot of measures to kind of shore up the general fund budget. As revenues rebounded from that, the city's been conservative about adding back FTEs or adding back programs and services. And so that has provided an opportunity to increase reserves in the general fund. To the extent that in 2019, the city council determined that the, the balance in the general fund was sufficient to address any issues economically, unexpected surprises like slides at the beach on the bluff, and potential reductions in state share revenue from the state, which has been threatened over the last eight to 10 years. And so those operating surpluses then have become available to then put towards other capital projects and other funding needs. And it's been a very good thing in the last few years to have those operating surpluses. I would also note that in your November budget workshop for the capital budget, you reviewed 15.7 million in capital improvements for fiscal year '24 alone and a five-year capital improvement program of $57 million. And so that does not include this project. And so staff feel that the issues, the critical needs, the critical funding issues in the capital improvement program are being addressed. There is a plan, and we have a very aggressive capital improvement program over the next five years. And so we did not feel that the $4 million operating surplus needed to address any critical need that we hadn't already funded in the CIP.
Okay. And just two more, then I'll turn it over to the colleagues. Kathy, can you comment on the buildings? Are they all going in front of the VRB and for final approval and design? I'm just kind of curious if you could comment on that process? And then I have one more for Parks and Rec.
The Building Review Board and Zoning Board of Appeals have seen an introduction. There are some changes here, so we are going to circle back. We really wanted to find out where the council was before we took the, the buildings back for final approval. I believe we're also still waiting for a final survey, which will help the Zoning Board of Appeals hone in on exactly what variances, what the distances will be. So we'll bring that all back to you, really in consistent with how we deal with other board and commission matters.
Okay, thank you. And last one, on the small workout features and the amenities, they're kind of scattered about. I mean, it's not a big expense, but I'm just kind of curious. I mean, what's the utilization of those in the other parks that we have? And have we kind of thought through like, oh, the kids love this, and, you know, people use them and all that kind of thing? Or is that still a hypothesis? Maybe we'll refine and kind of change up the assortment a little bit?
Well, our, our first look at this was at South Park. We, we did put in a station that has three pieces. So it was somewhat of a test for us, and we do see them being used pretty frequently. We think that at this site, they have a lot of potential to be used, not just kids, obviously, but we, we think that adults will enjoy it as well. So, and it's a nice loop that you can walk, get your exercise, and you can stop and, and workout. And we don't think it will compete with the fitness center inside, so I think it, I think it will be pretty well-received.
All right, thank you.
Other comments?
George.
Questions? Alterna notes?
A shortlist, only two. One for Chuck. On contingencies, can you clarify, is that, well, actually, let me back up. I, I didn't hear and apologize if I missed it. An answer to Alderman Preschle's question about the contracts being fixed fee, guaranteed maximum price. So they are.
They're, this is not a guaranteed maximum price because it was bid. We, we looked at that, so we don't have a guaranteed maximum price because we actually have bids for the numbers.
Okay. And so the contingencies, potentially cost overruns, unforeseen conditions?
Right. You know, the, the best example is, and we don't expect this, but if, if there were something in the, you know, there were a lot of soil tests done, but if something came up unexpectedly, if there was more topsoil than, than, than clay, and I'm sure my consulting team's going to correct me on this, but those are the kind of things that if, if that happens, there could be the need for more contingency money to allow for that. Or if something was found under the field, that's unlikely, but those are the kind of contingencies. But with the buildings, obviously, there's other things that could happen. We feel that the contingencies are strong enough, though, to cover, you know, the, the basic things that you might find. It's pretty, the, the buildings are pretty straightforward. There's nothing that complicated about them. So we really don't see too much that would add to those prices. So the bigger concern is always going to be with the bulk of the project, with the grading and the excavation, all of that kind of stuff. So that's why we think the numbers are fairly tight.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thanks.
Dr. Hallow, quick question, not so much a question, but asking you to respond to something. One of the attributes you commented about all the, our savings, our plans for future capital improvements, what you didn't get into that is a question that has been raised by residents over the last couple days, is pension liabilities and, and the, and the soundness of where the city stands. Would you mind just, this is a topic you get into when we go through budget, but for someone who's only paying attention to this turf field discussion, hasn't had the benefit of hearing that, and I think it would help to speak to the residents on where we're standing on our pension obligations.
Absolutely. So in 2016, the city council approved a different approach to funding police and fire pension obligations, recognizing that the statutory method of funding was not fiscally sustainable. And so since that time, the city council has approved significant increases in levies towards the police and fire pension obligations with the intent of bringing that ramp down. So instead of seeing 8, 9, 10% annual increases into, you know, through 2040, the statutory deadline for funding, putting that money in at, in advance brings that ramp down, reduces interest costs over time, and provides significant long-term savings to, to the city of Lake Forest and property owners in Lake Forest. Without a doubt, this year and last year have not been good years with the market. Pension funds across the country are losing money because of investment losses and equity investments. The important point to remember about the funding of police and fire pension obligations is that we smooth investment gains and losses over five years. That smoothing is intended to avoid significant increases and decreases in funding requirements based on investment performance over the given year. So we had significant investment gains a couple years ago that are now being amortized over five years. And what we saw last year was those gains were sufficient to offset the losses from fiscal year '22. We don't yet know exactly how fiscal year '23 will end. Today was not a good day. But as of April 30th, we have an independent actuary who goes and examines all of that. But I do not expect any significant increase in pension obligations next year as a result of losses this year due to the five-year smoothing. So I hope that addressed your question.
Thank you.
Okay.
Who else? Alderman Weber?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I have two points. The first is more on a financial end. Our community generally looks at private-public partnerships in the past on things like bigger project beaches and perhaps buildings. And so I'm wondering if among the staff level that's come up for a project like this, I know the council talked about it when this first came up in a working group, maybe two years ago. And so I just wanted to get some feedback from you if this has been looked at, or perhaps if the council chooses to move forward, if that's something that will be pursued to maybe eliminate some of the taxpayer dollars.
Early on in the project, it, it was talked about. And last year, as we moved forward with the design, there was a decision made to look at this without that additional option, I guess, with outside donations. I don't know at this And last year, as we moved forward with the design, there was a decision made to look at this without that additional option, I guess, with outside donations. I don't know at this point, I, we have not talked, I haven't talked about it. I don't know if City Manager Wishe can add to this, but...
Yeah, I'll jump in just to say, and I hope I'm not getting ahead of our Parks and Rec Director Sally Swarthout, but certainly, if that's something the council wants us to entertain, and you're right, it has been a model we've used very successfully in the past, then that's something city staff will explore. We did anticipate having a discussion with the council in the near future about another potential public-private initiative specific to the Boardwalk project at the beach. The council may recall that that project came in significantly over budget. We do think it's a project that has a lot of potential for private philanthropic support to assist the council. I think historically, there have been challenges if you're going out for multiple fundraising campaigns for Parks and Rec assets. At the same time, there's a, you know, there is a limited donor base, and we usually be tapping the same people at the same time. So, at this point in time, I think staff's priority would be focusing on a public-private partnership specific to the Boardwalk project. But if it's the council's direction to pursue that with this project, we can certainly do that as well.
Yeah, I think it's something to keep in mind. We might have organizations that might want to put their stamp on this type of project that they are so strongly in supportive.
And I'll just note, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I would say, I think that is an approach that makes sense if the council wants to look at phasing in some of the work. So, if there's a base project that is ultimately supported for approval, and we move forward with that in the immediate sense, and look at some of those additional amenities and phasing them in over a period of time, then it would make sense to afford us the time to go through that sort of fundraising campaign. If the council's looking to move forward with, you know, approving some of those amenities sooner, that presents some time constraints and challenges for us from a fundraising perspective.
Okay. And the second thing I wanted to mention, several residents, many residents have reached out through email and by phone to me from the fourth ward and other wards, and kind of circling back to some of the environmental concerns. So, I wanted to be sure to touch on that. Being in a horticulture industry, I'm very sensitive to what those are. We've talked about them at length here as well. And I want to give kudos to both the advisory group as well as staff for taking that seriously and really trying to mitigate as much as possible, looking at either newer technologies for infill, to preserving some of these natural areas leading up to the river. And while I feel we're never, it's never going to be perfect, and we discussed even earlier on about how natural turf will require fungicides, herbicides, mowing, fertilizers as well. It's not a perfect trade-off, but I'm proud of the work that's gone into this so far to prioritize what we're trying to meet our challenges, and that is playability. So, ultimately, I think the prioritization of the goals has been accomplished. And, but I do want to recognize that, yes, there, with any new technology or product, there are still concerns, but I think that this group has done a great job. Thank you.
Great. Other comments? Alderman Romo.
I have questions. Not too many of them, four of them. And I, this might actually be for Kurt. First of all, are we getting performance bonds for this project, like one would in, if this were a private project?
They're required under state law for any project that exceeds $50,000. So, we would require performance bonds for all of these types of contracts.
And, and then, so, and I see that insurance is part of this also. But I want to look down the line if, because I think that this product that we're using is, well, and whether it's tested or not, I mean, I don't think this product's been out there a terribly long time so that we've seen whether it's durable. I don't know when the, you know, where the actual product has been used. I don't know that we have a lot of history on this product, but whether we do or not, is my phone on? Yeah. What if it fails? Who is on the hook? As opposed to a lot of other projects we've done, it seems to me there are a lot of different contracts involved in this, and a lot of different companies, and a lot of different contractors. So, when one aspect of this fails, who do we look to for the warranty for it? And are we going to, are they going to be pointing fingers at one another and saying, "Not my fault. The infill was wrong. It wasn't put down properly. Oh, we never used this product with that particular shock pad, so it's the shock pad provider's fault and that manufacturer's fault." I want to be sure that we have recourse to these people if this fails. And I'm somewhat reminded of what happened not too long ago with our water treatment plant where those membranes failed, and the manufacturer, I think, was out of business. And so, I believe we had to go to a bond issue to retrofit that. So, you know, that's a little bit of my concern. Where does the buck stop on this project if some of these things fail?
Certainly, if it's a specific project, we would look to the warranty for whoever provided that project, that product. So, if it's the turf, I would assume we would look for the provider of that and call on that warranty. Is there going to be finger pointing among the contractors? Anytime something goes wrong, we're going to expect them to blame somebody else. But that's why we have warranties. That's why we have indemnification clauses in these contracts that would provide us some recourse to go after a contractor if there is a clear fault on their part.
But this Nicholas Consulting Group would not be responsible for any of that. They're just the oversight entity.
I don't believe they're providing any products or any warranties, but I defer to...
No, not for the turf that you're talking about. And the fortunate thing is, the turf and all of the other products all fall under Midwest, so we just have a contract with them. So, we have Brock is the other company for the shock pad and for the infill. It all falls under Midwest. So, it does make it easier for us, and I, if it has to do with installation, it would fall under Midwest only. But as you mentioned, contractors may argue that point. However, if it's the, you know, as you mentioned, if it's the product itself, it would fall under Midwest. The parent company on that would be Greenfields for the IronTurf product. And by the way, the product has been around for quite a while, particularly in Europe. It's been over a decade in use, but it is fairly widely used.
With these particular, like, three, the infill, the grass, and the shock pad all used together?
All used together, yeah.
Melanie, excuse me, I'd like to correct the record on something that you said. The membranes in the water plant did not fail. They reached the end of their useful life. At the same time, incidentally, the water plant was under capacity because of the addition of a significant number of sprinkler systems around town, hundreds. And when we went to replace the membranes, we were told that the manufacturer was phasing them out. So, we switched, when we did the expansion of the water plant, we also switched the membranes to a different, more, well, a product that's available. So, I don't think it's fair to characterize that as a failed project.
Was the manufacturer still around?
Yeah, they just stopped making that particular membrane.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
My other question is, will the elementary schools be using this?
We have had discussions with the school. We've talked to them quite a bit. As a matter of fact, one of the members of the advisory group was from the school. We do anticipate them using it for recess, PE, that kind of stuff. So, yes, they will be using it.
So, then I guess that sort of begs the question of, you know, maybe we should look at how appropriate is this playground that we're putting? I understand you're doing it so that when the older child's playing on the field, the younger kids have someplace to play. But, you know, if we're going to encourage the elementary schools to use this, we might want to put in some equipment that's more appropriate for that age group. I don't know if that's been considered.
Well, they do have their own playground just to the north. So, we have shown them the whole project, and we'll be continuing to have discussions with Dr. Montgomery and his staff as we go forward. But they're well aware of what we're bringing and excited about it, I think, so...
And are there, is there also, are we also redoing the parking lots?
We are not, including that in this project. There's, the entrance for the project will be off golf. We anticipate that it will go right through the tennis courts when this starts, so that would be somewhat of a staging area. So, we're not anticipating any issues with needing to redo parking lots at all.
Staging it off of golf, okay.
Well, we're staging, actually, we're entering and exiting off of golf. We won't be going down Hastings at all. And that's something that our team looked at in depth, to look at obstruction to the school, that kind of stuff. And we wanted to limit the traffic anyway so that there wouldn't be trucks going in and out, causing further damage. So, if, no parking lots are being used for staging or anything like that, so we're not changing anything with those.
And we have sufficient parking there now to accommodate the usage of these fields?
Yes, we do.
Considering that we're going to be bringing programs from some of our neighborhood parks to this facility?
Yeah, and that was looked at in detail with, one of the focus groups was the traffic and parking group, and that was, the first thing they looked at was, is the parking sufficient? It is sufficient for everything we're doing right now. Obviously, if other things came into the project, we would have to reexamine that, but it is sufficient for what we're doing now.
And that's with the addition of potential pickleball courts or whatever we're looking at?
Yeah, and the pickleball courts are in the same footprint as they were before, so that won't have any impact. We may get some more people, there's a lot of interest in pickleball, so it'd be great to see that being used. It's the first designated one in our city park system.
And then, the final question is, as I look at these buildings, and I know that this isn't in our purview, it'll go before Building Review Board, and they'll take a look at the architecture of them, but they just look a little sterile to me compared to a lot of the outbuildings at some of our other municipal parks. And so, I would hope that maybe some of the architecture is improved in the process to be more in keeping with what some of our other park buildings look like, realizing that could add some expense to this as well.
Yeah.
Alderman Novak.
Almost all of my questions have been answered, so I don't have that many left, and mine tend to be a little more pedantic, I guess. Concessions, I was surprised to see a concession stand. What's the expectation with the concessions?
Well, initially, we are going to be furnishing it with some equipment. The Park and Rec staff will be charged with detailed, you know, how we're going to use it. We're not anticipating starting off big with this or anything. We're looking at it as, let's get it built. The last thing we'd want to do is build this and then have everyone cry for concessions that, why didn't we do that? So, we thought it was a piece that would be important at some point. I can't really speak to what it'll look like on day one when we open, but I would anticipate there's going to be a desire to have some kind of concessions.
Will there be food and drink?
Yeah, that would be the thought. It just, you know, what level? I don't know.
Okay. There are now these two maintenance sheds. Do we need two?
There's actually just the one, so...
No, there's the, there's the one up in the northwest corner.
Yeah, that is not a shed. That is just strictly a concrete pad.
Okay.
That's it. And it will be screened by...
Oh, so there won't be a building there?
No, no building at all.
Oh, okay. I misunderstood. I misunderstood the diagram. Okay, so that's fine. Is there motorized equipment that's needed to maintain the turf?
Yes, just one piece, and that is a utility-type vehicle, initially, anyway. That's what our staff will be using. So, the small utility vehicles like you see on golf courses and in our parks, those would be what are used to drag the rakes and the grooming machine.
On those lines, I spoke with Glenn Hall, the turf manager in DeForest, Wisconsin, whom I understand has the same formula that we have.
Is the same three, yes.
And he said that they have their turf cleaned once a year by the company who installed it. Is that something that we'll be undertaking as well?
Yeah, and actually, to detail that a little bit more, we're going to get two pieces of equipment with our purchase of the sod, the turf product. So, that will be for weekly or regular maintenance. So, it's brush-type materials and a magnet to, you know, if there's any metal objects. So, that is something that we'll do on our own. But annually, that same company that they use, actually, Midwest, they will come out and do a, what I'll call a deep cleaning. It's a machine that we wouldn't want to purchase. It's pretty expensive. It's not something that you would need to do daily. But that's the machine that takes up the infill in part with a vacuum, cleans it, and then redistributes it.
Okay.
So, that's the deep clean.
You were able to recycle the infill?
Oh, yeah. None of it's leaving. It's just getting out all of the stuff. In addition, they will be providing testing. We talked about this at a former meeting, but HIX testing and GMAX, that's for the safety, that's to make sure that we're sticking to the levels that we expect. We'll be having that done on an annual basis as well. It's all part of the contract.
Is that warranted? Is there warranty coverage for that? So, if it does, as Melanie was asking, if it does fall below acceptable levels?
Right. It depends why, obviously. If it's falling below because, you know, the, we haven't done our maintenance, which we are committed to doing, if that were the case, they may say redistribute some of the infill. That's one thing. But keep in mind, the key to our safety of this is really the shock pad. We don't, that's why we have a shock pad.
Be touched, right.
We don't see that as, we're always going to fall within those limits.
Okay. This is a little picky. So, the playground area, there's only two benches. We need a couple more benches over there.
Those are the kind of things that I, we would put in the category of, we can add those if needed.
Can you make a note? Make a note. We need more benches over there.
I got you.
How long is the loop?
I could ask our...
Just be curious. It'd be good to know.
One of our architects, I don't know off the top of my head.
Just be good to know. So, when somebody's doing their laps, they know how much they're doing.
We'll definitely find that out.
You should put up a little sign that says how long the loop is.
I'm thinking it's a half an acre or a half a mile, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Great. There should be a little thing on one of those fitness stops. Are there benches or seating along the loop? Or water fountains anywhere in this complex?
Water fountains are, we're actually, bottle fillers, too. We think that's a good way to do it. They're on the buildings, the two buildings.
Okay, is there any, is there any thought to a freestanding water fountain or bottle filler?
We hadn't considered it.
Or something for the dog?
I like those.
Like we have a South Park, thank you, Sally. Like we have a South Park.
We probably won't, we haven't talked about whether or not dogs will be allowed, but my hunt is...
Oh, I'm sorry. This is a community park.
Yes, right.
So, dogs are allowed.
Yep, yep, but not on the turf field, I would guess. We can restrict that.
That's it?
But, yeah, I'm all for those.
You're going to fence the turf field to keep dogs out if you have to?
We are not.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Elizabeth, where'd you go? Just a couple. All the presentations have been so great. 90% of my questions are answered, so thank you very, very much for that. With the surplus, are, I know that there are silos of money. Are you allowed to move general operating surplus funds into other silos if something is needed?
Yes. In fact, that's what the city council's done the last few years, is take the general fund operating surplus and move it out to specific purposes and specific funds. Now, I will say there are limits coming back the other direction. So, for example, water utility is an enterprise fund. We can't use water revenue and transfer it to a park improvement.
But you could take general operating revenue and put that in water, or in Parks and Rec, or wherever.
Yeah.
and Rec, or wherever it's needed.
General fund revenue is completely unrestricted.
I'm, I appreciate the five-year plan and the fact that there's all these projects out there that we all want to get done, and while we have a five-year plan that gives us a good plotting way to address all of them, are any of them so urgent that we need to do them now?
I would say no.
Is there anything that's impacting somebody's day-to-day life that we should be addressing now?
All critical needs were met. The council reviewed the not funded list in the November workshop, and there were no projects specifically identified for staff to come and make an additional effort to try to fund those projects. So, we felt like all critical needs were covered.
Good. With the debt service, so we owe more than just, because there's other funds that are, have, that carry debt.
Right.
So, right now, with all the blue lines, not the blue, yeah, the red lines, which is the bottom line?
Red line.
The red line. How much are we paying per household to carry those bond payments?
So, the 2022 levy for levied debt was just over 1.8 million, and so that would be a little over $200 on a typical 800,000 household.
$800,000 house, okay. So, right now, all the Lake Forest homeowners with $800,000 houses and prorated either direction are starting with a debt of $203, and that's for pretty much the next 10 years, or thereabouts, on the chart that, that we had. Okay.
We're in '22.
Yeah.
So this number, so it goes up a little bit here in the out years.
All right.
And then back down, yeah.
What happens if your house gets appraised for more money than it's worth now? What happens to your share of this debt?
So, as we know, when we talk about the tax levy, 800,000 is a typical home. So if you have a $1.2 million home, it would be one and a half times that number would be the estimate. So it would adjust up or down depending on the different value.
So, hooray, hooray, we get our appraisals in August, and all of a sudden, the assessed values have gone.
So, I would say this, because that question did come up regarding the fact that homes are selling at a much higher price right now. And so, we understand that we're looking at a limited set of homes, ones that have changed ownership in the last year, running about 1.2 million.
Right.
We don't anticipate that that is indicative of all the housing in the city.
Okay.
But I would note that this is a quadrennial assessment year.
Right.
And so, this is when the township assessors are looking at all properties and reassessing them. So we usually get the estimate September to November of the year, as we talk about our 2023 levy, we'll have those estimates from Lake County.
Okay.
But I would note this, so that if there is a general increase in evaluations across the city, that's going to raise the total assessed valuation.
Okay.
So, the prorata portion of your property compared to all property in the city won't change that much.
Okay.
If you see a widespread significant increase in values across the city.
Okay.
The rate would just go down.
The rate would go down, yes.
Levy is the levy.
Right.
That's just as much money as we need.
Okay. So, adding the green, the athletic field, and forcing us up over that guideline, the debt ceiling, debt service capacity limit, how does that affect our bond rating?
So, great question, and probably an important point that I should have made in the presentation. So, when bond council looks at the bond issue, and Moody's looks at the bond issue, they will opine only on the levied debt. They do not concern themselves with the capital levy, because that's determined by the city council. So they are only concerned with making sure that levied debt service does not eclipse that limit.
So that's red and green?
So that's just red and green. So they will opine that it is well below your self-imposed cap. But that's a great question, I'm glad you made it, made me make that clarification.
I'm, so the PPL funding for the tennis courts, where does that money come from?
Park and Public Land Fund is Park Impact Fees on Development.
How much would it cost to finance the entire project instead of just 12 million? If we decided to take that 4 million, if there was a need that needed to be addressed?
So, if the city instead funded the full 16 million with all the options, amenities, that annual debt service would be 1.7 million per year over 10 years, just under 1.3 million on a 15-year. And then, the impact to the levy would be 4.7% on the 10-year option.
Okay, so per household? Can you do that arithmetic?
About $190.
Okay, thank you, I'm impressed.
In case.
Okay. And finally, interest rates, where are they going? Is there any advantage?
Tell me, Doug. Can we talk about that offline, so we can all make a bunch of investments overnight?
We need to know, right now.
So, the general consensus of those who make these kind of predictions is that we'll probably see one or two rises.
Okay.
And then a potential drop in late 2023 or early 2024.
Do we have an opportunity to refinance this at any time?
You do, yes, and the city has done that historically. In lower interest rate environments, we can refund or refinance the bonds and take the interest savings.
That's important.
Yes.
Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any last further comments from the council?
Only nine percent of them got answered.
I'd like to just comment again on the caliber and quality of the staff presentation tonight, and Elizabeth's ability to pull these numbers out of, out of note, out of her memory banks on call without preparation, so, very, very impressive.
George, do we have a chance to comment after the public?
Yes, we will come back for a final discussion after the public comment. There are also some procedural things, because we've got, I don't know, eight items to potentially bundle, so. But now, I would say it's time for the public to comment. I have one card that's been filled out, I don't know if, are there, is it possible there are more in the back?
I'm looking for Dana. Oh, there she is. Do we have cards available? If people are willing to fill out a card, just so we can maintain some order to it prior to speaking, that would be great. Usually, the mayor will entertain final comment for anyone who has not yet filled out a card as well.
Right. Okay, well, the first person I have who submitted a card is Mary Matthews, 1111 South Waukegan. Welcome back.
So, as we discussed last time, I'm concerned about PIFAs, what are known as the forever chemicals. And so, I wanted to make sure that you, the alderman, the mayor, and the staff have been able to read all the PIFA materials that I referenced the last time to you previously, and you should be alarmed. On the EPA website, the steps it is taking to protect communities from PIFAs, the article announcing the city of Boston banning artificial turf in parks, in parks due to toxic PIFAs, also known as forever chemicals, and as many other cities throughout the county, country, sorry. Maine is banning all products with PIFAs. The Illinois Attorney General Kwame Raoul is suing 14 manufacturers over PIFAs. 3M, the multinational conglomerate, announced it will stop manufacturing PIFAs by the end of 2025 due to regulatory trends and stakeholder expectations. Again, that means very expensive lawsuits. Beginning last July, the Chicago Tribune published a series of 12 articles about forever chemicals by investigative reporter Michael Hawthorne. The European Union, already with many restrictions in place, is in the process of banning the production, use, and imports of almost all products containing PIFAs. So the danger should not be ignored or glossed over. Actually, the process should never have gotten this far with artificial grass, as proposed by the minority vocal group. All the suggestions to make this palatable is just, doesn't change the facts. You're getting toxic garbage. Do the residents want to pay $16 million for this misjudgment? No comparison with real grass has ever been put forward. Do residents know what they may be getting? Far from being a leader, Lake Forest is following the misguided and short-sighted ideas of Mundeline and Vernon Hills. Lake Forest should be looking towards real leaders and sustainable practices. That is the legacy to leave. Poisoning our land, water, animals, and especially endangering the health of our students are not acceptable. And you're knowingly voting in support of nine and a half acres of poison will spur lawsuits. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, next on the list is Alexander Lacoste, if I pronounced that correctly, 360 North Mayflower.
Hello?
Thank you.
My name's Alexander, and I've been playing lacrosse since I was in like, third grade. And we play over at Town Line, which is grass, and whenever it rains, we get canceled, like our practices get canceled a lot, and then we can't like, practice, and then we don't get as good as can be, and then kids don't have as much fun, because then we aren't winning. And then a lot of people quit, and that affects a lot of people, and then they just aren't as happy.
Thank you very much for your comments. I would please ask people to refrain from clapping and making noises before or after the presentations or during them. Next is Brian Dacey, I believe, 460 South Green Bay Road.
Good evening, everyone. First, my name's Brian Dacey, lifelong resident of Lake Forest. Grew up here, raising three young children in middle school. I've, maybe other than Sally, been on our fields and in our facilities. Countless games played, coached, I've probably coached hundreds, if not hundreds, of kids in this, in this town, and I'm so thrilled with the work that all of the, that the city members have done, the time and effort that the council has taken to really look at all the different impacts, environmental, safety, and use, and our use of those fields here in Lake Forest. I think we've taken a very proactive approach to doing what's right for our community. The timeline that was shown earlier today, I think, started a few years ago, we are a decade behind communities that surround us. The time is now to move forward with something that will provide so much value to our community and residents that want to move to Lake Forest. This is very exciting. Tonight, you have the opportunity not to delay this any further, but to move forward and help children play the games that they so dearly love and not be rained out every weekend. We owe it to our kids, we owe it to our community, to do what's right and to provide something that will last a lifetime. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Mark Silver, 795 Linden.
Good evening, Mark Silver. Good evening, mayor, city council, concerned citizens. I'm a resident of Lake Forest, parent of four children. I also happen to be the chairman of Parks and Rec Board. I wanted to let you know, as was presented, this has been a years-long process. We've been very thorough about it, we've heard concerns, we've considered options, we've considered locations, we've considered size, all the details that are important to all citizens. Whether you have kids who play, whether you just want to enjoy the parks, whether you live in the area, whether you're just a resident who pays taxes, we've taken everybody's concerns as seriously as we can. We've tried to balance everything. We have gone above and beyond any field you will see in terms of the chemical makeup, getting the best, safest products. We have essentially spared no expense in how we've evaluated it and how we've looked forward to our kids' future. This is, as you've heard, something the city needs. It is an opportunity for the city, it will benefit the city for decades to come. I speak for myself here tonight, and I say I support the project, and I ask you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sebastian Carillo, 546 Timber.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming. My name's Sebastian Carillo, and I play lacrosse and football. I am a resident of Lake Forest, and I believe that Lake Forest should proceed with the plan of building turf fields. There are many benefits of having turf fields. The weather is never perfect, and when it rains here in Lake Forest, the grass fields get flooded, and there is nowhere for the youth Lake Forest sports programs to practice. Usually, teams have to resort to practicing at an indoor facility, such as Turf Time and the Farm System located in Lake Bluff, Illinois. And this forces, forces the programs to pay extra money. I hope that my lacrosse and football teams will be able to practice without interruptions at a new Lake Forest turf field soon. Thank you for listening to my voice.
Thank you very much. Next is Grayden Rother, 799 East Illinois?
Rother. Hello, my name is Grayden Rother. Thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak here tonight. I'm an eighth grader, I'm an eighth grader at DPM, and I'm fortunate enough to play lacrosse and flag football through the rec. I love all the memories I've made from being able to play the sports I love on a daily basis, except for when it rains. The fields flood, practices and games are canceled. Practices have been postponed to like, even a week, I like, remember from my times. One thing I noticed from traveling with my lacrosse team is how all the other towns, like Evanston, Libertyville, and Schaumburg, have great turf fields. Whenever my lacrosse team travels for games, we all get super excited whenever we get a play on turf fields. That being said, please vote for the turf fields. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Well done. Next is, I believe, Lynn Hayes, 1301 Northwestern, a little, if I got the name right?
Close, Lynn and Hanes.
Hanes, I'm sorry. Hanes, I'm sorry.
My name is Lynn Hanes. I'm a long-distance runner, and I usually run Displanes River Trail. I'm very pleased about this project over here, but the only, I have a limited question. You have two buildings that are being set up on the baseball field, and my question basically is, are they going to be heated so that in the wintertime, you can use the facilities? Because I, in my training, I'm out on Displanes River Trail, there's no place to go, and with these buildings here, I'd like to do my training here, because you have a 5K that you run on, on Lake Forest Day, which I run all the time, and I use that course to do my training, my marathon training. So with the buildings there, that would be, add a facility for me to, or any of the other runners at the Lake Forest, Lake Bluff Running Club, to use in case they have to go to the restroom. I just want to know if they're heated, because the ones on Displanes River Trail, they close them up in the wintertime. So, does anybody hear any answers?
I see, I see the city staff nodding that they're going to be heated.
They are going to be heated? Okay.
So, they have a lot of pipes and water in there, too, that need to be protected, so, thank you. Next is Kate Rother. I got it right, I think I got the pronunciation right the second, on my second try. I got it right, I think I got the pronunciation right the second, on my second try. 799 East Illinois.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight. I am very excited to be here. I feel like we're at the, almost to the finish line here, and I'm very, very proud of all the hard work our whole community's done with this. When this project came about, I felt like we were a little bit divided, our community on this. Some people really, really wanted these turf fields, other people really didn't want them. And I feel like we've come to a really great compromise on this. Alderman Lubie, I feel like you really hit the nail on the head when you summarized it here. What we've brought together, the plan that the Park and Rec put together here, I thought was brilliant. I thought it was bringing all different things together. We have a great, if we vote on everything, and that's really what I'm hoping you all do tonight with all the accoutrements, so to speak. It brought together the base plan, which are the fields, and that would be great. It still gives an opportunity for people who don't want to play on turf to play on some of the other fields here in Lake Forest. But the base plan does have the turf fields, but it also has the playground. There is a playground across the way at DPM for older kids, but this would be a younger playground on the side of the turf fields where you don't have to cross the way to a parking lot, so it's right there for younger kids. Alderman Lubie, it does give a bathroom. You mentioned that way back in the day. Please make me have a bathroom. Alderman Rommel, it does give some of the wetland areas and some of the natural grasses. It does have that boardwalk, it has the crushed stones and the pathways. Hopefully, get some of those natural grasses growing, get some butterflies and the birds out there. There's a place for everyone to sit there. We have some restrooms, let's keep them open for the gentleman who just brought that open. It sounded like people were nodding to that. I know Tim Hendren's a financial expert, and clearly, we have them in-house that's talking about the bonds, so let's do that now. I know Alderman Morris, you're a rock star at the finance side. That's not my forte. So here we are, folks, we're at the finish line. Let's do this now. Let's vote on this. Thank you, everyone, for your time. I really appreciate it. And let's go. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, last call. Anybody who hasn't spoken that would like to speak? All right, oh, yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't fill out a card.
If you come up and introduce yourself and give us your address, we'll make note of
Thank you very much. My name is Danielle Casuto. I just have, I do have a question, though, about what is the sustainability of this turf field? Is it going to have to be replaced completely in a number of years? Or is it going to be, maintain itself for like, 20 years? Because I thought Elizabeth's presentation was amazing with her graph, with the red and the green and the blue line. But, you know, at some point, the green part seems to be going away, but are we going to have to replace that field and put that green part right back into the debt service at some point in time? Thank you.
Thank you. I guess just to answer that question, we discussed this at great length at our last city council meeting, and there's a debate to be had later on about revenues, but the revenue, any revenues generated will be set aside for eventual replacement. And what needs to be replaced after, somewhere between 10 and 15 years, is just the rug and the infill. So it's not the entire project, it's just, and it is expected, I believe one of the reasons the staff chose a 10-year financing period as their conservative estimate on the bonds is because that lines up with the sort of conservative end of the useful life of the actual turf and the infill. So, just for those who haven't maybe been tracking this closely. I would bring it back to the council. Alderman Morris?
Thanks. I'm turning my microphone. I want to express my appreciation to Manager Wishe and the project staff for really their diligent work on this Deer Path Athletic Field Project. Recently, and I think it's come out, we received feedback from some residents that said we have not been transparent about this process, and we should slow it down, slow our decision down. For the benefit of the residents here tonight, and those who might be watching from home, I wanted to just go back over what's happened. We've been in this planning process for over four years, nearly four years. The city's maintained a very detailed planning update on its website in the Athletic Field Improvement section. The site links multiple athletic field planning events. There's council meeting agendas, minutes, videos, and there are numerous committee reports in that section. Additionally, there's a detailed FAQ section in the site for residents to review the planning process in greater detail. At the bottom of the page, you can sign up for an email update about the planning processes we've gone through. And so, as you've heard tonight, our planning has involved a large number of staff members, consultation with oversight committees, and numerous outside consultants. In May of last year, Manager Wishe appointed a 10-member citizen advisory group that was chaired by former Alderman Beidler to review the work being done on the project. They met four times, conducted their, concluded their work over those four meetings with really a strong recommendation to proceed with the turf project. And the recommendation was then posted on the city website. The Park and Recreation Boards, we heard tonight, carefully reviewed the turf proposal and gave their approval of the project. There were two community workshops for residents to attend and provide input during this period. Their findings and their recommendations are also on the website for the past year. There's been numerous financial estimates provided to the community over that period of time, as we've gotten closer and closer to the bids. On April 4th last year, the council had an in-depth discussion of the project, including detailed discussions of the funding for the plan. Director Holler provided at that time an overview of the preliminary cost estimates of the plan, and go to page 170 in the council minutes and see that. Her report includes a review of the bond funding options that we talked about. She had a 10-year, a 15-year, a 20-year, and a 25-year bond term. The review showed the prospective interest rates, as we've seen tonight, for funding options, and what the expected annual interest costs over those periods for those bonds. All of that was discussed in detail. Director Holler also directed, was directed to continue her modeling efforts, what you've seen the result tonight, in different ways of funding this project. And I think she's done a great job at looking at the different reserve options, as well as the bonding. At the time, the staff continued to evaluate different playing field designs and options for turf technology. They looked broadly at other playing field configurations across northeast Illinois. They consulted with local communities and schools in the area, what their experience with the turf playing conditions and products was. They hired outside consultants to help define the plan and recommend the proposed contracting process that we heard tonight. So I believe there have been significant opportunities for the community to join in these planning discussions. The proposed funding plan, as we saw, provides a modest increase in our community property taxes while still allowing us to be the lowest municipal tax in our region. The bond issue size is in the range of past bond issues. But for reference, people have asked, well, what about the 1986 Beach Restoration Project, which is an $8.5 million project? That was in 1986, so if you index that for inflation for today, that would be a $23.2 million bond issue. So this is a modest one in relation to all of those and in comparison to the bond issues we've done more recently. In addition, the proposed bond financing, as we've seen from Director Holler's graph, enables us to remain below the self-imposed debt service cap that we, most recently, we reaffirmed by the city council in 2013. So we can maintain our general fund reserve at 70% of the general fund revenue. That is twice what the required fund reserve balance should be, or needs to be. The bond will not jeopardize our AAA bond rating, and it will leave room for future councils to manage their capital funding, as we've seen tonight, as needed. So, in summary, Mayor, as Finance Chairman, I recommend approval of the residents to proceed with the Deer Path Athletic Field Improvement Project.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have one final comment.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Maybe I should have made it earlier. Just dovetailing on Alderman Morris, he referenced the beach project in 1986 and what the net cost was in terms of $20, $23. The one component that was left unsaid was the cost of money back in 1986. It was somewhere in 13% to 14% range. So not only in terms of scale is this a reduced cost, but the cost of borrowing that money is going to be significantly less expensive, which in part and parcel is where my inclination is in terms of, for the project in its entirety. I do want to bring this to a personal note, because, you know, again, as Alderman Morris pointed out, this, really, the genesis of this was over five years ago, when the master plan started to percolate through the friends of Lake Forest Parks and Recreation and the Parks and Rec Board. And I was part of that process, and I genuinely was diametrically opposed to synthetic fields. I didn't think it was the right thing for the community. Having spent the amount of time that we have with this through the entire process, I think there's no perfect solution, and that's something we all can agree on. But I think what we have in front of us now is the best possible solution, taking into consideration all views and all perspectives. I do want to thank and acknowledge the input of all of my colleagues on council, because your words have not fallen on deaf ears, and sometimes we can get prickly with one another up here, and we're aware of that. But it's only because we all care so much about this community, and we want to share our thoughts with one another and make sure that they're taken into consideration. And additionally, whether or not we agree with one perspective or the other, when we're sitting up here, I can speak for all of my colleagues, saying that we're listening intently, and we do respect everybody's perspective. And I do appreciate the community engagement that we have had. And then lastly, I just want to thank staff again. This is a very big project. We've pulled together a lot of people, a lot of staff members, and I think it speaks to the mayor, the city manager, and all of his department directors, and everybody that's worked in a collaborative effort to bring forth what we think is going to be the best solution that we have available to us now. I'm entirely in favor of this project, just as Alderman Morris had suggested, for the full project. I think now is the time to do it, if we're going to do it. And, I mean, really, those are my comments, and I want to thank all my colleagues for listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Alderman Rommel?
That would be belaboring points, but echoing Alderman Morris's and Alderman Gashkarian's comments. I couldn't be more excited about this project and doing it to the full breadth of the scope that staff and the advisory board have recommended. I would singularly say, my only disappointment is that my kids were not here to enjoy this, you know, as a parent of two actively involved kids who missed out on countless practices and games because fields were washed out. I understand and appreciate firsthand what that does for the kids, just whatever pursuit that they're, whether it's soccer, lacrosse, or baseball. So I'm very excited about the project. The city is in, really, it couldn't be in better financial strength to take this on without negatively impacting it into the future. The overall impact each resident is not particularly, you know, it's a relatively modest increase, as Alderman Morris pointed out. Even with this, Lake Forest will remain one of the most economically friendly from a taxing point of view, tax-loving standpoint for its residents. So, it is without reservation, I support the full scope of this project.
Thank you. Other comments? Alderman Rommel?
I fully realize I am going to be in the minority tonight, and I ask you to please respect my opinion as well. It really hasn't changed from when I first heard about this project. To me, this is not just 10 acres of plastic. You have a shock pad underneath it, which is another 10 acres, so we're talking 20 acres of plastic. I could have supported this project in, on a smaller scale to address what the real issue is, which is bad field conditions out there on rainy days. I think two to three artificial turf fields may have addressed that concern. I don't know that we adequately explored how to properly drain natural turf fields to accomplish the same thing. I never really saw that addressed. I never really saw anything on how do we properly drain natural turf fields to maybe address some of these concerns, to extend the playability of the fields that are out there now. I had kids who grew up here, who played on these fields, who played in these programs. So, I love the rec department and the programs that they do. My husband coached innumerable teams. Brian Dacey was on one of those teams. And thank you for coming forward tonight as a resident. And so I'm not anti-rec center, I'm not anti-kids sports. Both of my kids were athletes who went to the highest levels in their sports. But I just cannot support this project and that much plastic. I think there may have been other ways to address this. I don't see the usage numbers that necessarily support this. Could this not have been addressed in a smaller scale without expending close to $17 million that we're proposing on this project? You know, play to your heart's content. You know, fortunately, there are private, I went and visited one of the newer private facilities out there, the Farm, and they have great plans out there. It's a wonderful indoor facility. And to the students out here who have missed practices, I do believe that a lot of those teams who are missing practices have a relationship with the Farm. They reduce their fees for those teams. You can take your practices there and be indoors, out of the inclement weather altogether. I've looked around at other facilities in the area with much larger populations. They have two, maybe three, fields of artificial turf, Vernon Hills, Waukegan. You see huge complexes out in Schaumburg, but those are much, much bigger populations than this. We're a small community, we want to address our programs. We've heard time and again, we don't want to have regional tournaments here. That's not what we're building this for. We're building it for our kids and our community. And I just don't think we need 20 acres of what'll be plastic. I know the industry is trying to catch up quickly because they know the criticism that's out there about PFAS and about all of the other concerns with plastic, the microplastics that now we all have apparently in our bloodstream. And so they're trying to say, we'll recycle this cradle to cradle. I think ExxonMobil's even getting involved in that project. But have we seen that happen? I don't know. I don't think so. Let's hope it does. Let's hope this is cradle to cradle. But I don't know that now. And so, in good conscience, I can't vote for this. And God bless the staff. You took a project that is innately not sensitive to our environment and our earth, and you turned it into a project that has a lot of good elements in it. You could not have done a better job and bring forward a better project that has more environmental elements in it. And I greatly respect you for that. Thank you so much. Please respect the fact that I still can't support this in its entirety. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Novit?
Novit.
Sorry.
So, it's another difficult decision for city council and for me. The process began before I joined the council. I did join a number of the rec center Zoom meetings, but unfortunately, my questions weren't answered. And since I've joined the council, the process And since I've joined the council, the primary decisions had already been made. So the questions that I had then were kind of there already. It seems silly to rehash all of that now. But I do have some concerns. First, the money. We are contemplating adding $12 million in debt to our city finances. This is at the same time that we are considering a $105 million referendum for the high school. As Ms. Hulop told us, we're already paying $203 per household for existing bonds that date back to 2004, and we will be paying them for another 10 years. Adding the high school bond, which they are estimating at $500,000 per 500, wait, $500 per 500,000 household, house value, which equals $800 for an $800,000 house. So we're adding that to the 203 that we're already paying, plus the roughly 150 that we'll be paying on this. That's a total of $950 for at least the next 10 years. And then we'll be continuing to pay the high school bond forward from there. While we might have the lowest tax rate in Lake County, we sure as heck have a lot of bonds that are adding fees to our monthly, to our annual tax bills. Further, we need to add $360,000 annually to our revenues to cover the anticipated expense of 3.6 million to replace the turf in an estimated 10 years. At the last city council meeting, the majority decided to direct staff to fund up to 80% of that $360,000 through user fees added to the existing program costs. So on top of the bond, we're now adding, we're now asking families who participate in this project, in these events, in these activities, to bear the brunt of the ongoing additional costs that has to be taken, that has to be met. Again, low taxes, but more hidden costs coming to our participating residents. We have a $4 million surplus on our books right now. We have a number of parks that regularly flood in the spring and fall. Could we not use some of that money to address some of these drainage issues and try to do something to figure out how we can make these parks work better? Can we not investigate irrigation? Do we have to spend the $4 million to downsize this debt? If we're willing to spend $950, assuming the high school goes through, what's another 50 bucks? Has there been any, I'm not aware of any in-depth investigation into fixing the existing parks. I have not seen anything about studies, about engineering reports, about anything. So that's my concern with the money. Second, the location. I don't know of any other location that was seriously considered for this project. I've not seen anything about the rejections of the other parks. Town Line Park is 35 acres. It's got two baseball diamonds and a pavilion already in existence, and a splash pad and a playground for kids. That's some of the expense that we're getting ready to spend again for this new park. I'm also concerned that installing the turf, a turf, I'm sorry, a turf athletic complex in this neighborhood is going to result in traffic issues on Deer Path Road. This is a two-lane road, one of two arteries that connects Lake Forest from Waukegan Road to East Lake Forest. There are a number of lights. We have the public safety building. We have the hospital, and we have a school. On a residential street that is two lanes, it's hard for me to believe that adding this to an already congested thoroughfare is not going to increase traffic. Every student at DPM is going to have wellness classes on this field for families that don't want their kids to play on turf, for whatever reason. They have no option. I understand field hockey is played on the grass to the east of the school. That's one sport. What about everybody else? Adding turf makes it impossible to have the fireworks at DPM. I have not yet heard of an alternate location. I've not heard that it is possible to have fireworks at DPM on the turf. It's been made pretty clear to me that you can't. Is that right? I think so. So was Town Line Park even considered as an alternate location? Since we are digging up the entirety of DPM Park, or Deer Path Community Park, how much more could it cost to install the services that we're already taking out of this park and putting back in? We're adding new lights. We're adding plumbing. We're adding all sorts of things on that field. So why can't we just add them at a location that is surrounded by two four-lane roads that accommodate far more traffic, are closer to 294, are closer to Waukegan Road, and are closer to Highway 41? If kids from these other community, regional teams are going to be playing on these fields, which it sounds like if we're going to have private clubs renting the fields to raise the revenue to pay the $360 million, or $360,000 per year, that's more traffic. That's more high school kids driving to their practices on these fields. Further, the residential neighborhoods over by Town Line Park are not going to be impacted because nobody goes through them to get to that park. I'm not against turf. I think turf is necessary, given the needs that the community has brought forward. I don't have a problem with turf. I'm not crazy about the environmental stuff. I'm not even going to go there. It's already been made very clear to everybody. I'm concerned about the recyclability of the carpet. But I, and I'm sure, wait, I'm sure that this is the absolute best turf project that there is. I have no doubt that city staff, the Parks Board, everybody has done more than enough homework to ensure that we are getting the absolute best product that there is. But again, it's a lot of money. It's in a location that I don't understand. And I just, back to the environmental thing, if we're a leading sustainability-focused community, why aren't we investigating fixing the grass before we put in, as Alderman Rommel said, 20 acres of plastic? In conclusion, I cannot in good conscience support spending $16 million on this project when there are still so many questions that haven't been answered for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Bushman, who couldn't be here tonight, did circulate a memo to all of the council members. And he, I just, I will summarize it. It was too long to read. But he is not in favor of this project. He's not here to vote tonight, but I, you know, he wanted to get his thoughts on the record. He is concerned about traffic and tournaments and overuse of the facility. He doesn't think that there's going to be sufficient demand, or there is sufficient demand to justify this facility. He's concerned about the cost. He is concerned about environmental issues and thinks that we should delay a decision. So that's as best I can summarize his memo. Alderman Preschlack.
Well, I appreciate everybody's comments and thank you. I always like to say thanks to what I think has been really a world-class process. You know, this community always does things very well. And I think this process that the city staff, Jason and Sally and everybody on the advisory committee and the consultants really architected a world-class process that we should all be really proud of to solve a problem that's real in our community. You know, our fields are just not playable. There's lots of cancellations and we started that process over two years ago. And when I first heard of the project, I said, well, let's, you know, I'm one person, I'm one Alderman. I'd like to hear what the community thinks, you know, because I feel like we have to honor the process and all the surveys and the workshops. It really became clear that to maximize playability and to also take into consideration any environmental impact and player safety and obviously cost, that this was the best solution. You know, that's kind of what we're all saying here from different vantage points. You know, doing nothing is really not an option at this point because this has been chronically an asset that's been underinvested because we, as a community, don't have a separate park district as a taxing authority. And a lot of other communities do. And so all of the assets in our Parks and Rec portfolio compete with other capital needs over time. That park, when it first started, was grass and it was pristine and it was beautiful, but it's really costly to maintain. And there's still an environmental impact that's negative, just based on upkeep and things. So you have higher costs and you don't have, and you don't solve the core playability issue and you still have environmental issues. So when I step back, I'm just super proud of our community, all the people that volunteered their time, our city staff, and the fact that we did this in a very deliberate and transparent basis. And we can afford this and do it. And so I'm really excited about the project. And I just wanted to thank everybody for their time and their thoughtfulness in how we went about it. This will be an asset that will be in the tapestry of our assets, like the beach and Market Square, our schools, the college that was here. And we're all going to be rallying around that when it's opened and going, wow, look at this. Look what we built together. And I commend the staff for all your hard work. And there's a lot of hard work to come, so thank you in advance.
Thank you. Any final comments? Alderman Weber.
Mayor, is it appropriate for staff or someone to comment to Alderman Novit's comments about Town Line Park? Because we did talk about Town Line Park extensively, about the lighting and about how the agreement, and maybe, I don't know if someone else can articulate this better, about the agreement with the neighborhood and how lighting is not permitted at that location, which is why, because lights are already at Deer Path, and someone wants to speak to that.
Well, I think you just covered it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's nice job.
So I just wanted to make sure you knew, Alderman Novit, that that was looked at and because of the lighting, that that location was discussed.
Yeah. Okay, so we have eight items that I would like to take, I think I get a sense of the consensus here, that I would like to take as an omnibus, so that we don't have to have eight separate roll call votes. So first, I would ask for a motion to consider the eight separate action items under Agenda Item Six relating to Deer Path Park Athletic Fields Improvement Project as a single omnibus vote. This is a voice vote. If the motion is made, okay, do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor? If anybody is opposed, I'm sorry, if, does this need to be unanimous? To make it, to go to omnibus? Okay. So if anyone is opposed to making this an omnibus vote, this has nothing to do with the actual substance. It's just procedural. Then we will have to take each item, each of the eight items separately and have eight roll call votes.
I would just note for clarification on the record, the eighth item, which is the bond intent resolution, would need a number associated with it as part of the motion.
Okay.
So if the council was considering the full menu of options, which I think is what I heard, of course, council can adjust that number, the amount would be 12 million, $12 million. So that should just be noted in motion.
For the bond.
For the bond.
Okay. So do I, so I have a motion and a second, so all in favor of making this an omnibus consideration?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? I think that's all in favor. So we will now, okay, so the eight action items relating to Deer Path Athletic Park, or Athletic Field Improvement Project that will be considered by the city as a single omnibus vote are as follows. First is an award of a contract with Nicholas and Associates for $11 million, excuse me, Second is an award of a contract with Hitchcock Design Group for $115,500. Third is an award of a bid with Midwest Sports Turf through the Tips Co-op for $3,450,000. Fourth is an award of bid with Keeper Goals, also Tips Co-op, for $176,035. Fifth is an award of bid with Musco through the Sourcewell Co-op for $813,900. Sixth is an award of bid with Polygons, also through the Sourcewell Co-op, for $113,000. Seventh is an award of bid with Landscape Structures, which is also through the Sourcewell Co-op, for $222,263, for a total of $16,431,870, which includes the tennis and pickleball courts. And then last, number eight, is a resolution expressing official intent regarding certain capital expenditures to be reimbursed from proceeds of one of our obligations to be issued by the City of Lake Forest, Lake County, Illinois. And that, I would make the leap to say is a $12 million bond. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And I have a second. Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novit.
No.
Alderman Rommel.
No.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Five yays, two nays, motion carries.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question about that? Is this going to come back to the council at some point about exactly how we're going to be financing this when we issue the bonds? Are we going to get exact numbers that we're voting on and it will come back to the council?
Interest rate, so forth.
Exact numbers. And with this vote, are we committed then to the $4 million taken out of reserves? Or is that still something that we'll be discussing?
I'll let Elizabeth deal with that.
So at this point, you've approved maximum financing of $12 million. So that would assume $4 million operating surplus towards the project. That can be changed. You'll see the bond ordinance twice. Right now, we plan on April 3rd and April 17th. But if we do want to make changes, it would probably be beneficial to know that in advance of April 3rd.
Thank you.
I would note, the award of bids that just occurred was in the amount, I mean, the mayor read through them all, but in the amount of $16,431,000 with the $435,000 from the Parks and Public Land Fund. So if the council were to entertain in the future not allocating that surplus towards this project, it would leave a hole in the funding for the contracts that were awarded.
Okay, well, thank you. And again, this has been, I think, a fabulous example of how the community works through challenging issues and comes to a resolution that not everybody is 100% happy with, but everybody got, I think, all made the project better. And I think, reiterating Alderman Preschlack's comment, I think this is going to be a legacy asset for this city that's going to pay dividends for all of us that are in this room who live here, in the form of just another jewel in the, in the city full of treasures that we live in. So thank you all again to the staff and all the citizens that provided input, both for and against, to the advisory group and former Alderman Biedler, who led that group so effectively. And I just think this is a great day. I really do. I think there's no other real solution to this problem. Last item on our agenda is additional items for discussion or comments by city council members. Anything that we haven't dealt with tonight that you'd like to speak about?
Just on a personal experience, I happened to tour the water plant last week with the Junior Garden Club of Lake Forest, and it was a fascinating tour and I was just really proud of the staff there. They're very educated and we have excellent water. So to all those who've made great decisions about membranes and great work.
That wasn't part of your initiation back in the day?
No, I joined during COVID.
Oh.
No, it was all adults.
Garden, garden club.
I thought it was junior. Garden club. Okay. I thought it was literally like junior. Sorry. It's all relative term. Sorry, I'm sorry.
You don't qualify for the real garden club yet because you're too young.
I got it. I thought, literally, I thought you were bringing.
No, it was great, though. I mean, it was just impeccably clean and it was fascinating.
So the question is, when do you move up to the real garden club from the junior garden club?
We have ages ranging from probably 30s up to 90s. I know.
The junior garden club.
I will.
I was literally thought you were.
But I think it would be a great place to bring boy scouts or girl scouts to.
It's for, you can understand, though, there is extremely limited access to the water plant, for very good reason. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everyone.
All right, guys.
Thank you for your comments. They're not. Not stress. Not stress.